All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the town council work session Monday, August 20th. Our first up is a request to waive curb and gutter installation at 419-423 Lorae Avenue, Director of Planting and Zoning.
Thank you, Mayor.
So mostly I'm here to answer any questions you have on the application. It's the Lyons family, they are building two houses on Lorae Avenue. The addresses are 419-423 Lorae Avenue. The project is a little unusual in that the very steep terrain with the project, and I think they've run into some costly excavation type of work associated with that. Per the code, they were required to do an engineer plan, both profiles for the driveway. We have a maintenance agreement with them on that. And of course, you can see in their request, basically I read it, financial concerns appear to be the main reason for the request. The town code, section 148, 850, which is also in your packets, explains that the town engineer can waive curb and gutter in limited situations. This is not one of those because there's curb and gutter across the street. And a request like this would have to be approved by the town council. Specifically, it says the council may waive curb and gutter in such situations where the majority of surrounding developed properties do not have curb and gutter, and where the character of the area is relatively low density. It also says council should consider traffic impacts of the development as well as drainage considerations and environmental considerations. Staff made a recommendation that if council grants the request, that we felt it was appropriate to consider adding in a culvert, 10-inch-high culvert to meet up standards and regrading the drainage ditch, which is partially filled in with sediment at this time. If the waiver is requested, the town may incur additional cost if we ever decide to put curb and gutter in the majority of Lorae Avenue in the future.
John.
Yeah, I mean, what kind of excavation work has gone into these two sites so far? Except for drainage purposes, has there been some excavation work done?
Well, in prepping the driveway, there was also, I think, some issues with the foundation, with the county with the building permit. But primarily, it's just dealing with the rock that's included, a rock ledge, basically where they want to put their driveway. And also, prepping the driveway, it does have to be paved, and there would be an asphalt required to make sure it's designed for the engineer plans that they had done, which is in your packet. There's also some, some catch bases for stormwater in the driveway, which have to be completed. Those are put in to mitigate runoff into the streets that will become a problem. And so that, all of that together, has been quite costly to this point.
Anyone else?
What did you hear again, sir?
Well, I said the last time that I would not vote for another one, and I will not vote for this one. I think that our code requires it, and that's what we need to follow, and that's what we need to continue to do, or take it out of the ordinance and complete it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Bill.
I echo what he said. I understand the issues, but we've taken a stand here. We've had flood issues that we had to fight with, not fight, but work with people that had flooding in their basement. We had to go back in, we're putting curb and gutter in at other places recently. This coming year, we're going to put in some curb and gutter that should have been put in 20 or 30 years ago to make the street more viable. I understand where this site is, and I understand the excavation based on the switchback that they had to put in for the driveway. But we have to make a stand somewhere to eliminate this future going down, the town putting in curb and gutter every time somebody has an issue the next time around the curb.
Gary? I'll get back to John soon.
I wrote past the site yesterday and looked. Curb and gutter, the closest one is on Curdfoot. It would be my suggestion that if we ever put curb and gutter there, that maybe we can ask them to pay for the cost if we ever come down these days.
Similar to what we did with, did we do that too, Gene? Habitat?
They won't be the only.
Doug, did you hear his suggestion that 20 years from now, the town puts curb and gutter, does, would that go with the deeds that whoever has the house, whoever owns the house at that time?
We could set up a legal mechanism that would ruin up the land.
Jake, did you have something?
So I guess, this is not my area of expertise, I'm trying to understand. I get that there's a significant slope, and the excavation costs would be expensive. So with it sloping down, I guess I'm not quite understanding the difference between putting in curb and gutter, kind of the way it looks now, and what other additional excavation costs there would be. They have to push, I mean, carve more out of the hillside in order to get the curb and gutter, is that the issue?
Jeremy?
I don't know if I'm really answering that. I think maybe the applicant would better answer what their true financial considerations are, under the cost of the curb and gutter would include concrete work.
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, is it the cost of the curb and gutter, because that's always been the case, that there would be a cost for curb and gutter? Or is it, they've gotten to the project, realized the projects cost more than that they had hoped, and now are asking for an exception on the curb and gutter?
So I spoke to the applicant numerous times, and my understanding is that a lot of the excavation work that was required on top of the building costs have put them in to a spot, more like that second scenario you said, where now the project is much more expensive than originally anticipated. I appreciate what Jean says, and amen, I've said this before, let's remove it from the code. I would love to remove it from the code, but insofar as there hasn't been will on councils to remove it from the code, I'm in favor of giving these waivers wherever it's practically possible. I would love to see this come forward, and let the votes kind of fall where they may, because I think that it's, it's not what we're after, to punish people who are using lots that otherwise are just going to go unused, and are not going to be put on tax roll. Where, you know, this is, this is something that effectively is going to save this project for the applicants if, if they can't finish within the constraints of their budget. I really do think that we need to make this ordinance work for the applicants and for the people who are trying to build, not as a way to punish them.
Chris?
Well, two things really. First, I'll just piggyback, I'd be in favor from it.
Do you know what you're saying? When you remove from the code, you remove everybody from the code, builders, there will be no more requirements for new houses with gutter.
I'd still be willing to look at, look at it further.
Well, you said you would be at support removed.
Well, we could start the dialogue.
I wanted to make sure you knew what you were speaking about.
That's fair. Second part was really just clarity for me, I'll be transparent, like Jake here, this is not my expertise, I mean, I'm not talking cyber or software engineering. So this alternative, right down here, I'm looking at staff recommendations for 10-inch pipe culvert and a regraining drainage ditch, right? So if that were to take place, is that temporary, or is that almost as adequate or sufficient as the curb and gutter itself?
Well, to clarify, the curb and gutter isn't necessary from a stormwater management standpoint of the site. The code does require it, and it would be beneficial to have a whole street curb and gutter, and so part of the reason is to have the new development, and they add curb and gutter, it's in front of their property. But as far as drainage goes, there's a minor ditch there, most of the water will, is going to flow to the other side of the street, you can see that just by going out to the site, but there is, there is a small channel which is partially filled in with sediment on the applicant's side. And I spoke to engineer and building works director, and we felt the normal thing to do there without curb and gutter would be to fit in a standard entrance with a culvert to regrade the drainage ditch.
Gene?
My experience in putting in culvert fights, you've got more problems than, than you're going to have otherwise. You just rather own, just leave it like it is, but untied with what's already there than put the pipe in. Every time you get a storm, and that's the grade of the reality, still block them up almost every time it rains, unless you put at least an 18-inch culvert. I didn't see 10-inch in there, I mean, they can bite it in spite anymore, 12 inches or bigger. I'm not in favor of that, I think we need to follow our code. We did the same thing with the subdivision ordinance, we approved subdivision ordinance, and a week later, we changed it to allow streets that are narrower. I mean, we just want to have ordinances, if we're going to keep taking our ordinances and modifying because somebody builds a house, didn't look at the cost, or had the cost, and things come up. But I built mine, mine cost, maybe about $20,000 more than I expected, but that's what happens. And to me, I'm not, I'm not in favor of waiving any more curb and gutter. I was going to come back to haunt somebody else down the road, whether it's me, or someone else, somebody that, and the taxpayer's going to pay for it. So I'm in favor of leaving it like it is, and if we're not going to leave it like it is, then just make the ordinance and just throw it away. Because that's what ordinance is for, to tell people what they need to do when they build houses, or whatever. You've got a site plan right here, it shows you the curb and gutter and the whole nine yards. This is one that's approved by the zoning department. That's what we approve, that's what will be done, and that's the way I stand on this issue.
Jake?
Councilman T. Wall might be able, that's one to answer this one for me, but who did the curb and gutter down the other side of Lorae? Was that as each?
Property owner did.
As each house was built, the property owners did it, that wasn't a project?
No, some of that was put in later when we had the 50/50 curb and gutter thing. It was not required when those houses were built, but they came in and realized that they needed curb and guttering. And at that time, we had the voluntary people to come in and curb and gutter, and then we would do the installation.
So then, the other side of Lorae, where a couple of these homes are being built, there'd just be curb and gutter in front of their properties, but nothing on either side? Would that, would that, with the slope, the topography there, would that affect the curb and gutter that's being put in in front of those homes, eroding it, eroding it, being there, not having a continuation? Jeremy?
Well, I mean, it could, basically the water that would be taken off of that minor ditch and come out onto the street, and then go back into the minor ditch further down. So they're, you know, potentially on a heavy rain, there could be, if it's not maintained, there could be some erosion there when they come together.
To me, excuse me.
Sure, go ahead, Gene.
When those things are even built on that hill, whoever built them or knew there was going to be a major issue. Because you don't build on a hillside like that, you're not going to have a water problem. And they're always having a water problem, not this. Because it's like building a house in a hole, and this was built on top of a hill. And so, you know, people are going to be starting complaining as soon as they sell it, and somebody washes a whole ton of yard out because of the slope, just like the person that builds one in a hole, and the water fills up in the hole, and floods their basements. We have got to make a stance on our subdivision ordinance and follow what we have approved.
Bill?
I'll go back to last year, off of Braxton. We just paid for a bunch of curb and gutter down there because of flooding, and these houses were built over 40 years ago. So who wound up fitting the bill, or footing the bill, was the town of Front Royal taxpayers. And we also had to go to insurance to help with flood relief there. So I think we're headed to the same kind of situation. The taxpayer is going to pay for the bill going down the road at some point in time. If we continue to go, I have, I have to take the position of Councilman Conley's statement, he's for open anytime, no curb, gutter, and if you're going to control rainwater, you've got to have something to run it in. So that's my position, that's why I say it. I don't think the taxpayer in the town of Front Royal should continue to finance curb and gutter in front of people's houses. When they build a house, they ought to pay for it in their mortgage over the period of time that they're going to own that home. So that's my concern.
John?
Just to be clear, I'm not opposed to curb and gutter. I think the curb and gutter is town infrastructure that the town should pay for. And barring that, if you want to have a wholesale curb and gutter requirement, put it into new subdivisions that are going in, not to people who are trying to build on one-off or two-off lots inside the town that otherwise are not going to come to use. Because otherwise, we're still just piecemeal of this.
Then how do you correct the issues that we've seen from 40 years ago, like we did on Braxton? We paid for all that. It came out of the budget, which was taxpayers' dollars. That was somebody else's waiver from 40 years ago plus. So here we are again, we're going to make the same error and waive when it should be part of the house that's being built.
Yeah, for the same reason I don't feel that we should charge them for running sewer line in front of their house either. I mean, this is, it's town infrastructure. If the town can't afford to pay for its own infrastructure, then a wider discussion needs to be had about budgeting.
All right, Joe, bring us on the agenda. Three options, one Gary's option, one no, one yes. Gary postponed until town puts in gutter along that road, whatever, just, we'll talk about it from now on, if it's related.
No problem.
Approve or disapprove?
I think it's going to be our responsibility from these two houses going forward anyway. Have a look, write that, have a look, see what you think.
Yeah, Jake, if you could, you know, kind of like maybe brush up on some.
I've heard you've seen it.
I have.
You've heard it from, yeah.
All right. All right, before we go any further, John, can you read the ad, number, item number six?
Mr. Mayor, would the council add a closed meeting to the agenda pertaining to, one, consultation with the council, and, two, the protection of privacy of individuals in personal matters not related to public business?
Six. Motion, second. Jake, yes?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And when you get to it, you've got the motion. All right, continued discussion for funding of the radio system for the police department. Director of Finance, we did get a report on how we're going to look at financing. As the mayor, I would like to see council agree to pay for it out of general fund, because I find it a little odd to be borrowing money when we already have money to pay for it, and I'd waste $100,000 in interest, but that's up to council to make that decision. B.J.
Yes, so a couple weeks ago, we talked about the radio system, $45,000 for leasing the radio system, that doesn't include the maintenance, means with the included with the annual budget. As we move forward, I've reached out to VML VACO to get quotes, as well as I did some figures up that we would borrow from the general fund balance, and how much does it save us annually, I mean, not annually, but total wise, depending on what terms we were to look at, so we could be saving anywhere from $51,000 to $113,000 in interest paid. These funds could be freed up, obviously, to use in other aspects of the budget, possibly move on to a credit program to finance those projects, or other things as well. But staff recommendation is, as the mayor mentioned, to use the funds out of general fund surplus and not require a repayment.
Gene?
You know my feeling on the general fund.
That's why I started with you.
You just can't keep taking all the money that you've got reserved. If you have a major problem, you've got to have, you've got a problem. You've already got one that deals to bring up problems within a couple of weeks, another $100,000. So that takes it down to $968, down to $868. If you have a major snowstorm or a major storm, that's not a whole lot of money for your problems, I can tell you that. If that's the way the council wants to feel, they ought to go, and I agree with saving the interest money. But I tell you, we're, we're cutting our, we're cutting our arm off, spider cell, and we keep getting money out of the general fund, making a couple of reserves. And you'll see that one of these days, it may not happen tomorrow, but it's going to happen, because we've had it happen in the past. It just scares me to death that we were dropping this same weight below $1 billion.
Jake?
So more for record's sake, this is monies above and beyond the three-month required reserve level for us, correction?
Yes.
And that's why you reference it as surplus above the three months?
Yes, reserve.
That's correct. I'm glad it was acknowledged that way in here, because that is kind of the root of what we've been discussing up until this point, so I'm, I'm in favor of this, this is, I wanted it to be taken out of the general fund to begin with, so.
Chris?
So.
I'm going to rail the table.
Yeah. Good approach. I have one question, but it has to be addressed off-record, so I'll wait. And the other one is, what about a compromise and just do half out of general fund?
Okay, John? Whatever motion we decide to make Monday night, you can amend, whatever.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it come forward, I think it's a necessary project in some way. I'm kind of inclined toward Jake's point of view right now.
Gary?
Yeah, we're leaning to have above the three-month average, and my opinion, we should just use the money out of the general fund.
Bill?
I have a, I got mixed emotions, but it's, my argument's been all along, since I've been sitting on this council, if we have that excess over and above that three months, we should make a decision how we're going to spend it. And this is an emergency situation, as far as I'm concerned, so I hate to go against my colleague over here, but I think it needs to, I think we need to take it out of the general fund.
Joe?
One I wanted to state was, I support also taking it out of the general fund, but I do think that we ought to have a provision to return that money back, would be my recommendation.
Put two motions on the?
That's just mine, because even if you took the 10-year borrowing from the fund, it'd be about a $54,000 annual expense, which we were kind of anticipating anyway for a debt service, so.
I mean, it's a good idea, a great idea to repay, because you rebuilt the fund back to, put it on next Monday night.
Well, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not standing up against this.
No, you're not.
I tell you what bothers me more than anything, is why wasn't it put in the budget? We've owned this for a long time.
We got 50.
And why wasn't it put in the budget last year, or year before, or whatever? And then all of a sudden, we get to, with half a million dollars to spend, we come out of general fund, and that really bothers me, because somewhere along the line, we're not doing our job due diligently, as the department is, or whoever. We knew we needed it, and now all of a sudden, in the middle of a financial year, it comes to us, and we've got to bring out a half a million dollars out of the general fund. And that, to me, is, should not happen. We knew, at least, I understand we knew that these radios were going to be needed, and we made no effort to get money put in the budget to pay for them. Now all of a sudden, we've got to have a half a million dollars plus in order to pay for a radio system. And that's what bothers me more than anything else. But I'm in favor of doing it, taking it out of general fund, but I also agree with Joe, we ought to have a way to put some, put some money back. A general fund doesn't grow, it's not like an enterprise. But you take it out, it doesn't come back.
Unless you make it back. Let's catch Joe, Jake, just for a second.
I want to be clear, that radio system was on the CIP project, and we did in this year's budget allocate $50,000 for some debt service, so we knew that we were going to be embarking on something this year. We just didn't know what the timeframe was going to be.
But it wasn't an item, that's what I'm saying, it was not a budgeted item per se.
No, but it was allocated in the budget for a debt service if we could get something arranged.
Jake?
Yeah, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, was that our hand kind of got forced with the, with the current system not being supported anymore, so we had to make a move right away.
That is correct.
So I remember talking about it, and I remember putting $50,000 aside. I think the shift was when we didn't know that it was not going to be a supported system going into this year. So I'm fine with that. I was wondering though, to Councilman T. Wall's point of, you know, knowing that we're going to have to replace the system, rather than, you know, paying back the general fund, could we put a portion of money aside for a 10-year replacement, or a five-year replacement of the current radio system, knowing that, like we do with our police cars every three years, or whatever, that we're replacing the equipment because we know it's going to run its life? Can we do that for the radio system, because that's going to be a continual technology that's changing, that we're going to have to keep upgrading, and not wait X amount of 10, 15 years that we've waited this time around?
Joe, do we know the life expectancy, or Chief, maybe?
Maybe Chief can answer that.
I would say, I would say 10 to 15 years would be safe.
10 to 15. I guess, you know, Jake, whether we put it back into the general fund, or, it's still going to be there one way or the other, 10 years from now, they take it back.
Well, if we're doing a 10-year loan, there's a 10-year replacement on it, and we know it's going to cost a half billion, why not?
Sure, I mean, either way.
Put the money, put the money aside and not have this conversation 10 years from now, and just replace the system, get a new one.
I'm not going to say to not have that conversation, though. Joe, come up with something, put it on the agenda for everybody, okay? To approve. Take it out of the general fund, take it out of the general fund with repayment going back to a 10-year.
No other options.
It could be amended.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
I mean, if somebody doesn't like, if a motion's made, and somebody wants to amend it to where half's taken out and half paid, whatever, they can take an amended. All right, resignation of the Urban Forestry Advisory Committee, U.F.A.C. Ms. Berry, do we have anybody that is looking to join U.F.A.C.?
We do, actually. David is here, and we've discussed someone that will probably be a good fit, and I will forward you that email. I may have already a few weeks ago. And Ms. Hopeless, we're going to have her with us on Monday.
And this is only going to be for December, till December this year, correct?
Right, it will be a short reappointment, just to fill that gap, and then we'll reconsider them again.
So what does council think, just go ahead and take David's recommendation, let him fill out the rest of the year without bringing in a whole lot of people for him?
And David, this person is currently on the beautification committee?
Yes, actually, Lorraine Hopeless finished her term as president, and Linda Taylor, who has been their secretary for a number of years, is now voted in as their president. And we would probably benefit from the fact that a member of beautification committee is continuing to be on our committee.
I know council generally interviews, but we thought in this, in our, with council's agreement, we would forward you Linda's information from now till December, and reconsider them.
All right, put it on the agenda for Monday.
Thank you, David.
Don't put it on the present. All right, continued discussion of property maintenance. You have been provided A, B, C, D, or E. I'm going to go around the table. I'm going to go around the table, consensus, and hopefully we'll narrow down to A, B, C, or D, or E, which everybody would like to talk about. And let's start off with Gene. Your options, sir?
I'm not sure I have any of these options right now.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, you know, when I, in 2000, I got on the council.
Well, can I make the consensus round first so that when we get to some...
What are we gonna consent for?
Just which one we gonna home in on, hopefully? If we get four to one, five to one?
I'm not agreeing with any of the ones I'll give today.
Okay, so you're at A. Okay. Jake?
Can you come back to me?
Chris?
I currently stand with C.
Okay. Got one C. John?
A.
One A. Bill?
B.
In between A and B. Does that help?
That doesn't help. We're gonna home in on one of these to discuss tonight because we're not gonna be sitting here talking about A, B, C, D, and E, and if everybody's not interested in one, why us discuss it?
B for now.
B, okay. Back to you, Gene.
Well, you know, again, 2000, I've been trying to get this thing approved that we can get the opportunity to take care of the dilapidated buildings. And I think that ought to be our first option, just worry about dilapidated buildings and forget about the maintenance code until we're ready to approve it and have money enough to fund it.
Apparently, this maintenance enforcement option is what we need to enforce. Is that correct, Joe?
But you, I'm, we can do this project without hiring anybody. All we need to do is get with Doug, and we may have to get a consultant to go in and look at a building, since it's the one on the corner of Sixth Street. And if it's not livable, then we have, we need the option to either remove it or whatever we can do legally. But I'm not ready to do a maintenance code to, because firstly, we have no funding, we don't have anything ready to go, and even though Winchester does it, they've been doing it for many years, because I was a part of that when I worked over there. But the point I'm at, I like to firstly, before we get into any enforcement of maintenance code on these buildings inside or outside or rental property or whatever, I like to see us start out, we're just doing nothing but trying to get rid of the dilapidated buildings. We can do that without hiring anybody, having a vehicle, having a secretary, whatever, through Doug and maybe getting a consultant to come in there and write us a report, and then we make that final decision under a new state law that they'd be able to operate on, and like Greg Doug.
Could we get to that?
Jake?
Well, Doug, I mean, I thought the whole reason for this was because we don't have any teeth under the current, like, we needed to adopt this in order so to, to use the example that Councilman Tewol was talking about, if there was a building that we felt was a problem or a public nuisance, we can't address that right now, right?
The only tool we've got right now basically is dangerous, unsafe structures. Beyond that, we don't have any enforcement tools.
So, option A would allow, I'm sorry, option B would allow some level of enforcement, which we currently do not have.
Yes.
Without adding a property maintenance enforcement or secretary or any other cost to this program. Is that correct?
It would require us to have a code official under B.
Well, if we wanted that, but we could use the county's code official, or we could, to Councilman Tewol's point, hire somebody else to do that if there was a building we're concerned about, correct?
To the extent the county would allow us to use, yes.
Does that go, is that all true for option C as well? Having, I really don't see what the difference is completely between option B and C. To be honest with you, I mean, they're both the maintenance code. I mean, I understand that there's sections to the maintenance code versus the full maintenance code. I don't know why we just adopt certain sections of it, but not the full thing. I think last time we had this conversation, main concern, I thought I heard around council, was adding additional cost to a budget that doesn't, adding, I think we were throwing around numbers like a couple hundred thousand dollars to our budget, which is what everybody is really concerned about. And when we left that conversation, we had an understanding that we can adopt a property maintenance code without a rental inspection program with, that would allow us to have a little bit more legs to stand on for buildings that are dilapidated without necessarily hiring any staff for the program.
That's what I thought, too, Jake, and I, that's what I agree with.
Okay, so that, so that's what I was trying to get at. Which option allows for that? My opinion of it was option C, was which, which is what Councilman Morrison said, which allows us, we could hire people, we could do it, we could put in a rental inspection program, but it's not, none of that has to happen on day one. We could grow into this program. Is that, is that correct? Doug? Jeremy, am I asking the wrong person?
Well, Jeremy needs to chime in on this, please.
Okay. I wanted us to get back to our...
You have to have a building official. The code says you have to have a qualified building official, so it means the qualifications in the state code. That can be outsourced, but I can't sit up here and tell you there would be no staffing needs for any of these levels other than A.
But we can't, we can't designate or say that if there was, you need, you need an official in order to say that this property is dilapidated. Is that correct? Or does it meet the code?
Yes.
Without that, you have the, you have the ordinance in place, but technically no enforcement. Is that correct? Am I off on that?
Correct. I mean, the code does allow for others to provide technical assistance for the code official. Theoretically, you could outsource a code official, like Middletown has done, and then staff handles the day-to-day activities.
Here's what the state code says. You have to have a code official that says the code official shall have at least five years of building experience, licensed professional engineer or architect, building fire or trade inspector, contractor, housing inspector, superintendent of building, fire or trade construction, or at least five years of building experience after obtaining a degree in architecture and engineering with at least three years of responsible charge of work. Any combination of education and experience of or equivalent knowledge of building shall be deemed to satisfy these requirements.
So, you have to have them on staff? You have to have them on retainer? You have to...
It could be on retainer, it could be on staff, but that would be the person that has to make the call.
Of course, right. That, that was getting to my point, is that's the person that makes the determination, but it doesn't say that you have to have that person as a full-time staff member, part-time for DM.
No.
Yeah. Okay. So, this gets back to our recent conversation of why don't we get this in place and start growing the program, but not throwing, you know, $200,000 at it? Again, just using the numbers that were thrown around the last time with staff. And focus on the, focus on the main concern buildings that we had, which is the whole reason why this came up as dilapidated buildings, as part of the dilapidated building process.
Well, the difference between B and C, that was a question. B only deals with vacant, the worst properties, you know, like the one on Sixth Street. C addresses everything, so it applies to all buildings in the town. That's the major difference.
So, B, we could take a baby step with B?
B would be the baby step. The issue to work out with B is how are we gonna get that list straight?
Okay.
All right. Get him somewhere, Jake?
I'm still, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna have to go back. I mean, I'm still in favor of C and getting it in place and then working from there. I don't think there's any cost change from B and C, but...
I like C, but seems like B is gonna be baby step.
Well, I mean, C is fine if, if we're not going to do the whole, what you've got here, the maintenance thing.
But all those votes would, well, C doesn't have it, but all those votes, or the, I'm sorry, we'd have to vote on hiring staff and everybody else to come with that anyway, so.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. We need to start out, again, with, maybe the C is the answer. I mean, I'm not sure, Jake, I'm not sure. I just can't see us, at this point, going into a full maintenance program in the beginning. We gotta start somewhere, but we don't start in the middle or the top. We just gotta start at the bottom and work towards us and see how things begin to work and see how they begin to function.
Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yeah.
B would be a good start.
B would be at this level, we can start. Strasburg, I would, Jacob, we had mentioned this before, Strasburg's in the situation where they had adopted C, they went with that option, and they're just not enforcing it because they don't want any staff. So, we've spoken to them in the past about potentially...
Sharing their...
Staffing. Next could be something we could continue to discuss with them.
Right.
When we, when Jeremy and I talked to Winchester, they suggested start with baby steps, just go into it slow and...
The enforcement or the program?
Enforcement, to just get everybody used to it, both city staff, the case, the residents, just getting everybody used to it.
Well, I mean, I think everybody agreed here that baby steps on the enforcement side of things.
And maybe there could be some dialogue between town manager, town attorney, with property owners that, you know, I don't know, goodwill, you know, we're looking at derelict properties. You know, it's, it's always good to come with us.
Well, that's what I mentioned a while ago, is if we start out in the infancy program in the beginning, and I don't think we, I think your best step at this point would be to hire somebody that has those credentials that you read. When you gotta, when you, when you find that person with those credentials, you're not gonna get them for $40,000, $50,000. It's gonna cost a chunk. Now, I'd rather see us go ahead and hire somebody, that doesn't put the town too far in the middle of this issue because we don't have that person on staff. This, this consultant comes in, he makes the recommendation, and then we follow that recommendation. And I think that would be easier for us as a council than to hire somebody and have them on staff who then makes, makes that reference, because then it's gonna come right back to us. If we hire a consultant to do it, and I think that it'll be cheaper in the long run because you're not paying them every time, every day, every month, you know, because they're already on the employment, going to the town. And when we get ready to do a dilapidated building, then that's when we call them in, and then we do what we have to do.
And want a retainer?
Oop. And then, after that, then if this works good, then we begin to start considering that second part of the maintenance code.
Bill?
I got three points. I think we, as a council, agreed, when we had Chris Collins in here two times, that we needed him to go before the legislature to get it in our charter. So, that committed us right there. Then, a month ago, I got on the platform where I said, "We need to decouple our building code from rental property maintenance," and that's what this does. Now, how we implement, whether it's B or C, I was, I was looking at B simply because it didn't have, where C has maintenance issues, the other one has safety structure. Now, if we go with C, that takes safety and maintenance, but you gotta decide how you're gonna implement. And that's what I asked for before, was the steps to get there. So, you could go with B or C, but you gotta be committed that you're gonna have, hire somebody, or you're gonna bring a consultant in on an as-need basis. So, it's pretty clear to me, either B or C, once you make up your mind, that this is what you wanna do, and I assume we all agreed to that when we had Chris Collins to get that in our charter. So, our options are pretty clear, it's either B or C. So, now we gotta decide, does it include maintenance, or safety, or both? And do we hire, or do we consult? Now, that's the way I look at it.
Gary?
I was just gonna add, to Mr. Tewol, there's also certifications that this person we hire is gonna have to give.
Yep.
Department of Housing, we felt there's that number, so it's...
You're right.
It's gonna have to give.
Chris?
So, real fast, just to put things in perspective, I get, I get the, whatever, the challenges, the arguments for B versus C. I like C because we go back to the original broad-stroke approach that Eugene brought up in her part of a year ago, when we were talking about a refined area, he said, "I want it for the whole, whole town, if, if anything." So, that gives you that. I like Jake's argument in terms of a program. It's kinda like the radios, if you want a radio, you don't want the bare minimum, you want something that's gonna allow you more options. Just because you have the more options up front doesn't mean you automatically implement them start day one. It gives you something to grow into, right? Like a little kitchen. And then, I went back to these requirements for an official. This is where we get hung up. So, I spoke to Winchester, and Winchester started off freelancing this work as well, and all the certifications and all the bells and whistles that were required to inspect these homes at $25 a house. So, that's my argument. Twenty-five dollars.
I don't see, I mean, yeah, that's relatively, yeah, it's very expensive, but I don't see, I think, I think that we're equivocating B and C. There is a big difference, in my opinion, and that is that B just keeps us in the same boat that really kind of already are. I mean, it's a public nuisance, that's it. That's, I mean, it's very, very minimal, and I think that you have to look at those sections again because it's really not gonna do much for us. That's why, that's why my original vote was C, on implementing the full property maintenance code and then figuring out from there.
Anybody else? Bill?
My earlier statement was very clear when I said decouple, and I wanted the steps. I chose B simply because it took a baby step forward rather than taking a jump. I could live with C, and I probably would vote for C if we got the parameters right. But if we don't have the parameters right, I would vote for B. So, that's where I was coming from. I wanted to step into this thing rather than jumping in full force.
All right, let's run it around the table. Go ahead, Chris.
I saw this little example. Gene and I were supposed to go out to Culpeper, we just, for same circumstances or whatnot, didn't make it. Is this working well for Culpeper, Jeremy? The B option?
They don't have much involvement with it.
Not much to it.
They handed off to the county, just building inspection.
Okay. And we know what county's name is here.
Here you guys talk, if you're interested in a consultant, one thought would be we could put up an RFP and get some proposals on, get some more definitive calls on what somebody would charge to administer a program like this. Let's see who out there is qualified.
I guess the question, what are we gonna go with? Gene? B or C? Seeing the way we've narrowed it down to B and C.
I personally think, and I agree with Jake, I think we need to do our property maintenance, but not at this point. I think we need to start with B, see how it works, get hired consultants, do the RFP if that's what you think you need, or find some engineering firm that's got somebody that can do that, and hire it on staff, and start out with that. Maybe in six months, we may go back and then go to C. See if we get something moving along. But I think we need to take the baby steps before we get into this, because you get in too far, fast, too quick, you're gonna have more chaos, and you're gonna have any product, productivity in doing anything. That's the way I look at it, anyway.
Jake?
Oh, man.
B or C? Pretty simple.
I'm trying to, yeah, but you know that I have to say something about it.
Sure. Go ahead. Probably run it around the table.
And I'm trying to be really careful with my words because I don't wanna be too snickety about this, but I thought about being slow, and I've been talking about this for, you know, two years on council. I don't think speed is our issue. Do I wanna put out an RFP? I think it's a great suggestion, Jeremy, I appreciate it. But that just says to me it's gonna be another six months of us talking about it and trying to figure out our options or anything else like that. I think we have plenty of good examples around us of towns that have done it, done it different ways. We've referenced City of Winchester quite a bit. Councilman Morrison mentioned the cost to inspect a house. I'm sure we can verify if that's the case quickly and get that information... I'm sure we can verify if that's the case quickly and get that information out to, to council. I, again, putting in the property maintenance code and then, you know, deciding how we want to enforce it come. I want to see C out there as an option. If this council decides to vote it down, fine, or modify it, fine. But to me, do an option B is the same as option A, and I just, I don't, I get so frustrated with the, with the speed of government here, and two years is moving too fast on this. That doesn't make sense. Going back to what Councilman Selock said with Delegate Collins, I forgot about that. We brought him down here, talked to him about it, got him to go to Richmond and advocate for this, and then we're spending another year talking about it. I mean.
Well, we just got approved.
Well, no, I mean, it, yeah, anyways.
We've spent a.
I'm just saying, like, we got a delegate to finally do something that we were upset that was never getting done, and we're not going to implement the program. It doesn't make sense.
So you want to go with C?
Yeah.
Put the only thing that we have, Collins, was to get. Give us the authority. Dilapidated building. Authority. Not maintenance code.
And this is the T for it.
Chris?
For all the logical reasons.
Any statement? Nothing? John, you're still with A?
Still A.
Gary?
Just giving my brothers, B.
B?
I think our problem, and what concerns B is the buildings that we have in town that are boarded up. That's what I'd like to see something done about. That's, you know, that's my concern. So I would go with B.
Okay, Bill?
Get something done with that.
I want to start with B.
Okay. It's like three Bs, two Cs, and an A. Put it on the agenda, see what we're going to start with. Let them vote on it.
Vote on it?
Yeah, let them vote on it. Yeah. Put it out there, like Jake said, talk about it too long.
Do you want to vote on just the three options that were brought up?
Just the two.
Just the two.
John's A, unless John wants it on there.
No, it's all right. You can't, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, vote on doing that.
It's always a person.
We do have to draft, re-draft the ordinance in this case, if you want to vote on it, or you want to see the draft before you vote on it.
Well, we want to see the draft, but we're just going to.
We're voting on direction.
Yeah, we're voting on direction, which direction we're going to take. You know, it's, it's a lot of time you guys put into this, and it's time for us to stop the camp and going down the road.
So we're not voting on. We're not voting on.
Which one to use? Go with B or C.
But that still isn't vote to put it in place.
That puts it in place. Well, it doesn't.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Put it in place, but, yeah.
I look at a direct staff to move forward, or whatever option is approved, to start building everything that is built into that option and.
Then we're still going to have to bring it back and vote on adopting it.
Right, yeah, we'll have to basically bring the meat of the ordinances and everything, or whatever option you choose, and we'll bring that back, and then obviously, it'll be a code change, and then it has to be advertised in the paper to public hearings.
So I'm not in favor of that because what I'm hearing is we're going to vote to give direction to staff, which proponents in around this table can vote one way or another. When any party gives direction to staff, brings us back, and we vote it down again. When it goes to be amended as part of our ordinance.
I'm not reading it like that. I'm reading that council is hung up on B and C, or A, but can't vote on nothing.
But.
We have to give staff some type of direction, so voting on it, we'll put it out there.
But, okay. Do you understand what I'm saying, John?
I understand.
Okay. John?
My memory's not so good. Can someone remind me? We voted on this already, right? We voted it down, correct?
We voted on D.
We voted on D. So whoever was on the prevailing side of that vote should be able to make a motion to reconsider and amend it back to sections 104, 105, and 106.
Correct. And I'm on the other side.
Which would, I don't know, it'd still have to be re-advertised, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're still looking at at least a minimum two week period before you can.
I got that part, but what I was, what I'm confused about is, we're going to bring this up to vote to give direction to staff. Doesn't matter which way this vote goes, technically, because that's still not.
Based on the straw poll that's been held here, I think the, what I would do if I were in your place would basically say, let's make the motion to reconsider and bring it back and then amend it. Is it possible, Doug, to craft a motion that would do that? Okay. It still has to be re-advertised, but I would think that the discussion here, discussion to move forward, unless someone else disagrees with me.
I don't disagree, I'm just looking for closure. Which way are we going to move with this? Whether we're going to move with A or B, or B or C? The only problem, I got with what John's saying, is we're right back to D now. If we amend D.
Then you would amend D back to B.
Just say amend D to B, okay.
Yeah, that's what we have to have.
If that's the way we do it legally, I have no problem with that.
I mean, Jeremy, is there any particular reason we need to take it back through the redraft process?
The code will change some. I'll need to sit down and review with Doug, and I don't think it'd be anything significant. There would be sections, obviously large sections, that would have to be taken out.
I have one more question. Short. Jeremy, going back to D, that we did vote down, what, I mean, did we have everything that we see here on C in D when we voted it down?
D is different than C because it's got the rental inspection program, so it's like the next step up. C is everything without the rental inspection program.
Property maintenance code.
So it implies townwide property maintenance code everywhere, but no rental inspection. So we're not going to go inside people's houses.
So you'll have to take out just the rental inspection, is that what you're saying?
That, that'll be most of it. I'm pretty sure there'll be a few other things that'll have to change, but that's the vast majority of it.
Gary?
Doug, the code is changing end of this month to 2015. Is that going to play a role in how we adopt this?
Possibly. I'd have to take a look at the specifics.
Doug, have you been paying attention to what we've been talking about, going back and forth, which is the best way to put it before council? Make your suggestion.
I got my notes.
How should we put it before council next Monday night, move forward?
Do you all want to see the changes that staff makes, or you all want to vote on the final product next week?
I don't want to vote on the final product. I don't think anybody wants to vote on the final product.
Well, next week.
I would, I prefer not to vote at all next week.
Okay.
So you want to go back for a work session?
Wait until you all get the motion prepared and everything. I don't want you guys rushing this through and then potentially missing something to go back and change again. I don't think anyone at the table wants that.
So what I assume is we want us to bring it back to a work session so you can see it.
Okay. Bring it back again. Cancel the vote.
September 4th.
Yeah.
Okay.
September 4th, work session. Next work session.
Yeah, 3rd is Labor Day, Tuesday.
It'll be Tuesday.
Hmm? Yeah. So you're not going to be here?
No, I will be in North Carolina for the week.
And Bill's not going to be here, correct? And that, Bill's.
No, okay, I'll read it before.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Chris? Bill's good.
I mean, other than Bill?
As long as we have quorum, you know, we're good. All right. Council decisions, discussions, goals. Thomas Valk sent us an email today talking about being a felon or jaywalking. Chief has come up with suggestions of vehicle or motion. What did you come up with, chief, that we could take away the felony?
Well, the state code, knowing it's the punishment of the class four misdemeanor, and in speaking with the town attorney major, we could amend the counter to allow us to basically write a, like a.
Movement violation.
Essentially be a traffic citation in lieu of criminal warrant for the jaywalking, which to me makes a lot of sense if, if it was a situation where it was a repeat offender or somebody that had committed some sort of egregious jaywalking offense, we could always write it under state code if we felt that that was a better, a better solution to that issue. But I think this gives us a few more options in that, another arrow and quiver.
Doug, the last motion that we made was to include class four misdemeanor. Someone could make that, still make that motion, and then someone could amend it to make it a moving violation, so that we don't have to talk about anything. If anybody disagrees with it or likes it.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay. Yes, sir. Cal, are you saying that if it was really a flagrant violation, then you could write it under the state law?
Correct.
And then it must be under misdemeanor two or whatever.
If you write it under state code, it would become a class four misdemeanor. And that's what we were looking at, adopting the original state code, and then after discussion with Doug today, we could amend that to where we could write essentially a notice of violation that would be a kind of a lesser penalty than a misdemeanor.
Warning, maybe warning, something.
It would be a fine or.
Yeah, I read that in your email.
Yes, sir.
Everybody noted that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bill, would you take this into closed?
Certainly.
Chief, you in the major, can you take it?
I move that the council convenes during a closed meeting for the filing purposes. One, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public client regarding specific legal matters, specifically legal mechanisms relating to handling debt service related to prior or current budget years, requiring revision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711, A.8 of the Code of Virginia. Two, protection of the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business pursuant to section 2.2-3711.8.4 of the Code of Virginia.
Gene? Yes? Jake?
Yes.
Chris? John?
Yes.
All is yes. Okay. Take about five minutes, Chief. Sorry, we got to move.